Council taking place on Wednesday the 26th of May. The meeting is being broadcast live through our YouTube channel. As this is a new term of office, I would like to extend my congratulations to all those newly elected councillors who are here with us today for the first time and to those returning councillors who are successful in their re-election. This is our first meeting in person since March 2020. Before we commence with today's formal business, could I ask everyone in the hall to switch off or make silent their mobile phones please? Firstly, it is with sadness that I have to formally report the passing of former Durham County councillor Stephen Hoogill. Stephen represented the Evenwood Division for nine years over two terms of office. I should be grateful if you could all join me for the moment's silence. Please remain seated as we remember Stephen. Thank you. As I previously mentioned, this is our first in-person meeting since March 2020. I just want to remind those in attendance today of housekeeping issues. You will note that measures are in place for social distancing and a one-way system is in operation. If you need to leave the main hall at any point, please do so following the one-way system as you leave and re-enter the room. Please ensure that you wear face mask if you need to move around. Periodically through the meeting, you will notice that the external doors to the sports hall will be opened to provide ventilation as a Covid control measure. The meeting will continue while this happens. You will note that we have a range of equipment in the hall today. This is so that we can broadcast and manage the meeting. Any request to speak must be made using the voting handset. Once invited by the chair to speak, please stand up and face forward. We have a number of roaming microphones in the hall today. Once you have stood up, a microphone will be brought to you so that you can be heard. Please be patient with us during this process as microphones will need to be cleaned after every use. It would be helpful on being invited to speak during the meeting if you would introduce yourself by advising of your name and electoral division. If you encounter any problems with your voting handset, please raise your handset in the air and a member of committee services team will assist. The team will sanitise their hands before and after handling your handset. Again, please be patient as we do our best to coordinate all of these arrangements. I will now move on to today's business detailed in the agenda. Item one, election of chairman. Can I have nominations for the office of Chairman of the council? Is councillor Hovles?
Thank you. Chairman, it gives me great pleasure to finally nominate Jake Miller for the role of Chairman of Durham County Council. I have been privileged to know Jake for number of years.
Jake was born and grew up in Whitley Hill.
Can we move nominations without speeches please?
Okay.
Can I have a second please? Yes councillor Gunn? Yes councillor Shield?
Chair, our nomination for the position of Chair for the ensuing year of 21/22 is councillor Watts Stelling.
Can I have a second please?
Councillor Susa McDonald from Peterley West. I second the nomination for councillor Watts Stelling for the chairman for the ensuing year of 21/22 and I call for a named vote and roll call in the interest of transparency. Thank you.
Request for a roll call. No provision in the constitution for recorded vote by way of roll call. However, I understand the interest in this vote. We cannot see a result of the vote on the screens clearly if we're in the council chamber. I understand that people do not want to wait till after the meeting to see how members have voted on this occasion. I will agree a vote by way of roll call.
Thank you, Chairman. Just to explain the process for the roll call vote. I will read out the name of each member in alphabetical order. When I read your name, if you could stand up and indicate clearly please in a loud clear voice whether you are voting for councillor Miller or councillor Stelling for the position of Chair or indeed if you are abstaining from the vote. If I could emphasise the need to indicate your vote clearly. As the Chair has already explained, we do have roving mics. But if we have to wait for each mic to go to each councillor, we'll be here for some time. Clearly if we have trouble hearing you then we will ensure that a mic comes to you so that your vote can be recorded. And if I could ask you to be as quiet as possible and patient please whilst we go through the vote. So I'll begin the roll call now. When I call your name, if you could stand and indicate whether you're voting for councillor Miller or councillor Stelling as Chair or if you are abstaining. Thank you. Councillor Abley. Councillor Adam. Councillor Adcock Forster. Councillor Andrews. Councillor Jay Atkinson. Councillor Pete Atkinson. Councillor Avery. Councillor Bainbridge. Councillor A Beatty. Councillor K Beatty. Councillor C Bell. Councillor R Bell. Councillor A Bell. Councillor Binney. Councillor Blakely. Councillor Boyes. Councillor L Brown. Councillor D Brown. Councillor Cairns. Councillor Chaplow. Councillor Jay Charlton. Councillor R Charlton-Lenay. Councillor Cochrane. Councillor Coslett. Councillor Court. Councillor Crute. Councillor Curra. Councillor Denali. Councillor Duffy. Councillor Early. Councillor Elmer. Councillor Fantaro Derby. Councillor Fennick. Councillor Fletcher. Councillor Freeman. Councillor Griffiths. Councillor Gunn. Councillor Hall. Councillor Hampson. Councillor Haney. Councillor Haney. Councillor Hanson. Councillor Hawley. Councillor Heaviside. Councillor Henderson. Councillor Hennig. Councillor Higgins. Councillor Holmes. Councillor Hood. Councillor Hopgood. Councillor Hovles. Councillor Howarth. Councillor Howie. Councillor Hunt. Councillor Hutchinson. Councillor Jackson. Councillor Johnson. Councillor Jones. Councillor Joppling. Councillor Kay. Councillor Kellett. Councillor Kennedy. Councillor Lines. Councillor Madison. Councillor Manchester. Councillor Marshall. Councillor Martin. Councillor E Maven. Councillor L Maven. Councillor McAlune. Councillor McDonald. Councillor McGowan. Councillor McKenna. Councillor McKeon. Councillor McLean. Councillor McMahon. Councillor Miller. Councillor Moist. Councillor Malloy. Councillor Mull-Holland. Councillor Nichols. Councillor Nicholson. Councillor Oliver. Councillor Stelling. Councillor Ormarod. Councillor Peak. Councillor Potts. Councillor Pringle. Councillor Purvis. Councillor Purvis. Councillor Miller. Councillor Jay Quinn. Councillor S Quinn. Councillor Reed. Councillor Richardson. Councillor I Roberts. Councillor M I Roberts. Councillor Robinson. Councillor Robson. Councillor Rooney. Councillor Rolansson. Councillor Savery. Councillor Savery. Councillor Scott. Councillor Sexton. Councillor Shaw. Councillor Shield. Councillor Shuttleworth. Councillor Simmons. Councillor Simpson. Councillor Smith. Councillor Stead. Councillor Stelling. Councillor Sterling. Councillor Stoker. Councillor Stubbs. Councillor Sirtis. Councillor Sutton Lloyd. Councillor Taylor. Councillor Tinsley. Councillor Townsend. Councillor Varty. Councillor Waldock. Councillor Walton. Councillor Watson. Councillor Wilkes. Councillor Wilson. Sorry, M Wilson. And councillor S Wilson. Councillor Wood. Councillor York. And councillors there. And can I just double check that councillors Haney and Savery are not present? Okay, just bear with us while we tally up the votes. Thank you, members. Councillor Miller, fifty-three. Councillor Stelling, seventy-one. Abstentions, zero. Councillor Stelling is elected Chair. Can I invite councillor Stelling to come into the electin to the stage, please?
Thank you, members. I, Watts Stelling, of the Ledgate and Medmansley division, having been elected to the office of Chair of the County Council, declare that I take the office upon myself and will duty and faithfully fulfil the duties of it accordingly to the best of my judgement and ability. Once again, members, thank you very much. It is an honour. Can I first thank Katie for your term in office? It hasn't been an easy time to be Chair of the Council. And with you, Ozzy, councillor Johnson, for all that you've done in unprecedented circumstances. Well done. An applause for councillor Katie. And for Ozzy. Not forgetting councillor Meyer, who was the consort as well. Well done to you as well. Obviously, this is a great honour for me and my family. They'll be itching for us to get on the phone. Obviously, I'm looking forward to the forthcoming year and to meeting all of you in your divisions. And as Chair of the Council, to help you open or whatever you want us to do, I will be on hand. So I'm going to keep it nice and short because I think we've got a long agenda. And I would thank you all again for nominating me Chair of the Council. Thank you very much. At this point, members, I will give the group leaders the opportunity to speak at this point. Councillor Marshall, call.
Thank you, Chair. And congratulations on your appointment, Watts. I think we first met back when I was twenty-three, not long out in Nappies, up on Durside District Council. We've always had a good relationship. You've always been a really good advocate for your community up in Ledgate and Medmansley. I think I would agree. You know, you've always been a good man and a reasonable man. And you'll have our group's full support over the coming year. And I want to wish you the very best of luck. But before I sit down, could I just put on record my thanks to councillor Corrigan for the way that she's been not just the youngest Chair in this council's history, but also a fresh face for Durham County Council over the past eighteen months. She served a little longer than what I think she first expected, as well as supporting her community up in Belmont throughout the pandemic. She's worked really, really hard with several youth projects. And she's represented the council at home and abroad. And I know she's extremely proud of the new partnership agreement we've signed with Tuborg, which has gone on for over fifty years now. So congratulations to Katie, well done. I know you'll be very busy representing your community. And finally, to Ozzy as Vice Chair, who, because of the pandemic, didn't quite make it into the driving seat. But I know he was there supporting Katie. Ozzy's been a tremendous friend to me since my term back in the Durside days as well. And he's always worked tremendously hard supporting Beamish Museum, in particular in the visit economy across the county over the past few years. And I just wish them both well in their retirement and very best of luck to you over the next twelve months. Thank you.
Councillor Bell, Richard.
Thank you. Congratulations on your new election as Chairman. It'll be an interesting year, so good luck. And I'm sure we're all behind you. So this is item two, presentation to the retiring Chairman, councillor Corrigan. So two years ago, when councillor Corrigan was being proposed for the chairmanship, I remember then councillor Lang saying that she was known affectionately in the Labour Group as the Bern. And the election of one so young at the time was a little disconcerting for someone like me, who has always had Chairs older than him. And for a man in his fifties, that's quite a comforting thought. But any slight concerns I may have had when we dispelled one lunchtime at County Hall, I happened to be there when there was a youth orchestra from Tubigan playing. And I saw Katie moving among them, chatting them and putting them at their ease. And I thought to myself, you know what? This is working. So Katie, you've chaired our meetings well. You've represented our county admirably over the two years. I don't know what that's involved over the last year, whether there have been lots of virtual drinks, parties and virtual receptions. But you've, I think by common consensus, done a great job on behalf of the council. And we wish you all the best for the future in whatever life holds for you, Katie. So thank you very much. And turning to councillor Johnson, Ozzy. Really, I think if anybody ever deserved to be Chairman, it was Ozzy. He is liked and respected across all parties in this council. And it really was a cruel twist of fate for Covid to rob you of your Chairman's Year. But thank you, Ozzy, for your service as Vice Chairman over the last two years. It's appreciated. And again, Ozzy, all the best for your retirement. And I do hope you get time and some sunshine to enjoy some of the outdoor recreations like a golf and your gardening that you fond of. So all the best and thank you.
Councillor Hopgood, Amanda.
Thanks, Chair, and congratulations on your appointment. I'm sure you'll have a wonderful year. Katie, how do you follow Richard when he's had the first chance to speak? You've had a tremendous couple of years. I'm sure it's lasted much longer than you thought it would. You have been an absolute asset to the council. And you have conducted the role of Chair in a way that everyone should look at as an example of how to sit there, chair a meeting and go out to the public and promote County Durham. So thank you on behalf of everyone for what you've done. And I wish you all the very best with what the future holds for you. And to Ozzy, again, just to reiterate what Richard said, I'm truly saddened that you didn't get to sit in the big seat. You so deserved it. Covid has robbed lots of us of lots of things over the years, the last year. So best of luck with your retirement and whatever the future brings for you too. Thank you.
Councillor Shield, Alan.
Thank you, Chair. I was a little disappointed. I wasn't allowed to make the address for councillor Stelling. I did prepare it. And I'd like to read just a quick snippet of this. Watts is a true advocate of independence, endorsing the principle of putting people before politics. He has no political alignment whatsoever. And his electorate have repeatedly supported this stance with huge majorities at local elections. I would like to say personally also, I've known Watts for an awful lot of years, far too many to remember, starting at junior football. But what I will say is I am highly delighted that for the first time in a hundred years, the Chair of Durham County Council has been awarded to an independent councillor. Katie, Ozzy. How can I continue what's been said? But I'd just like to echo the sentiments and comments from the other group leaders. You have both acted as Chair and Vice Chair for two years through one of the most traumatic and turbulent periods in peacetime, resulting in unprecedented changes to working practices, not least of all the onset of virtual meetings. On behalf of the members of the Durham group, but specifically former elected members who are no longer current councillors, I thank you both for your endeavour, your perseverance during this extended period of restrictions attributable to the Covid nineteen pandemic. We wish you both good health, good fortune, and if necessary, good luck for all of your future endeavours. Thank you.
Councillor Shuttleworth, John.
Last two years. Wish them all the well for the future. Thank you.
Councillor Madison, Liz.
Thank you, Chair. And can I congratulate you on this position as Chairman? An honourable position. And I wish you well for the forthcoming year. Can I wish Katie all the very best for the future? As Mayor of Spennymore, I have had the pleasure of meeting Katie on civic events. And I can assure this council that she has been a tremendous ambassador for County Durham. Thank you, Katie, for all you've done. I share with you how difficult a year it's been for all of us. But in the times that I've met with you and also in your role as Chairman, you've done a fantastic job. Thank you very much. And for Ozzy also, I have met you on a number of occasions as well. And you've been a tremendous support to Katie. But also in your own right, thank you very much for everything that you've done. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, it now gives me great pleasure to present councillor Corrigan with the past Chairman's Medal. And you've got the box there, Katie. I'd love to come along and present it to you. But well done, well done.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for the kind words. It's been an honour and a privilege to serve as Chairman of Durham County Council during the last two years. To be the youngest Chairman in history so far has been quite remarkable. And to be the Chairman during the worst pandemic in modern times has been truly strange. And now addressing you here as Chairman without a seat on the council is most unusual. Therefore, I thank you for this opportunity. My chairman's charity this year was AG UK County Durham, for which we have raised over seven thousand pounds. Having taken the decision to support Ozzy and his charity, not wanting to then miss out, an amazing five thousand and seven hundred pound has been raised for the firefighters' charity. We live and work in the most marvellous, magnificent county. They are truly ingenuous and hard-working community spirit residents that the position of the Chairman serves. I had the pleasure of meeting with countless community groups too numerous to mention. And I want to thank them all for the hospitality and friendliness. I have visited many of our wonderful schools and feel assured that being educated in County Durham remains a great start in life. And along with officers and colleagues, we have strengthened the bonds with our friends. And along with officers and colleagues, we have strengthened the bonds with our friends and partners in Russia, Germany, in France and in South Africa, memorable visits to and from business diplomats. Therefore, in closing, I would firstly like to thank all of you who have supported me in my time as chairman. And to Audrey Lang and Rob Crute, who initially proposed me for the position, and Simon Hennig, my politics lecturer from university, who more than likely lit the political spark over 10 years ago. I would also like to thank all those officers who rallied round the youngest chairman. Helen and Ross, who made sure I didn't fall flat on my face at full council meetings. Victoria, who jiggled all of the various diary requests and the superb team in member support, who support all of us and keep smiling. And to Kevin Cook, who not only is a great driver, but has guarded me and the chain with great dedication. And of course, to Ozzy Johnson for his support as vice chairman and his consort Linda, for his support and advice and encouragement over the last two years. I'm sure I join the rest of the council in wishing him well in his retirement. And finally, I have to thank Bill Moyer for being my consort. His good humour, his sharp wit and his ability to write himself into my speeches has been enormously helpful. Thank you to Durham County Council for a truly memorable time. And last but not least, congratulations and I hope you have a great time as chairman of the council.
Thank you Katie, thank you. Members, now can I invite councillor Johnson, the outgoing chair, to say a few words? Ozzy?
Thank you Watts. Can I give my thanks to the officers, members, friends and colleagues, regardless of political persuasion, who I have served with over the years? It has been a privilege to represent Durham County Council as vice chairman, albeit in a reduced capacity because of the pandemic. I give my best wishes to you Watts, as chairman and to your vice chairman and to all members once again, regardless of political persuasion, in serving the residents of this beautiful County Durham. Thank you.
Can I ask the council to place on record its appreciation of the services of councillor Katie Corrigan during her period as chair of the county council and also to councillor Ozzy Johnson as vice chair? Members? Agreed? Can I now move on to item three on the agenda, which is the election of the vice chairman? Can I have nominations for the office of vice chair of the council, please?
Councillor Richard Bell-Barnet, Castle West Division, I nominate councillor BT Bainbridge for the position of vice chairman of the council for the upcoming year.
Seconda?
Councillor James Rollinson, Barnet Castle East, BT Bainbridge.
Sorry, I can't hear you. Oh, you can't hear, right, it's in the wrong position.
Sorry, if I could just remind members when they're rising to speak, if they could give the microphones a chance to arrive so that people at the back of the room can hear. Thank you.
Councillor Richard Bell-Barnet, Castle West Division, I nominate councillor BT Bainbridge for the position of vice chairman for the forthcoming council.
Seconda?
Councillor James Rollinson, Barnet Castle East, I'd like to nominate BT Bainbridge for vice chair.
Any more nominations? Councillor Marshall?
Thank you Chair. I'd like the nominee of councillor Shirley Quinn as vice chairman of Durham County Council.
Seconda?
Thanks Chair. Councillor Rob Crute for the Blackhall Division, second and councillor Shirley Quinn for vice chair of the council.
Okay, members, I'll pass over to Helen, who'll lead us through this election.
Okay, thank you members. Just bear with me one second. Okay. Apologies members, so you'll have noticed that we have committee services staff working the hall at the moment, replacing cards in your handsets. And that's because we've encountered a technical difficulty this morning. Whilst a recorded roll call vote hasn't been requested in relation to this appointment, my suggestion would be that we proceed on the basis of a roll call so that we can get the vote going, rather than wait until such time the equipment's going. And hopefully by the time we need to use the handsets for voting, we'll have resolved the issue. Thank you. So the roll call will take the same approach as we did previously for the position of chair, but this time we are voting for the election of vice chair. When I call your name in alphabetical order, if you could stand and announce clearly whether you are voting for councillor Bainbridge or councillor Quinn, please, or if you are abstaining. Again, if you need the microphone, we'll wait for that to come. So I will start now. And again, as I say, if you could indicate if you're voting for councillor Bainbridge or councillor Quinn. Councillor Abeley. Councillor Adam. Councillor Adcock Forster. Councillor Andrews. Councillor Jay Atkinson. Councillor Pete Atkinson. Councillor Avery. Councillor Bainbridge. Councillor A Beatty. Councillor Kay Beatty. Councillor C Bell. Councillor R Bell. Councillor A Bell. Councillor Binney. Councillor Blakey. Councillor Boys. Councillor L Brown. Councillor D Brown. Councillor Cairns. Councillor Chaplow. Councillor Jay Charlton. Councillor R Charlton-Lene. Councillor Cochrane. Councillor Coslett. Councillor Court. Councillor Crute. Councillor Curra. Councillor Denali. Councillor Duffy. Councillor Ealy. Councillor Elmer. Councillor Fantaro Derby. Councillor Fenwick. Councillor Fletcher. Councillor Freeman. Councillor Griffiths. Councillor Gunn. Councillor Hall. Councillor Hampson. Councillor Haney's not here. Councillor Han... Sorry, apologies. Councillor Bainbridge, thank you. Councillor Hanson. Councillor Hawley. Councillor Heaviside. Councillor Henderson. Councillor Hennig. Councillor Higgins. Councillor Holmes. Councillor Hood. Councillor Hopgood. Councillor Hovles. Councillor Howarth. Councillor Howie. Councillor Hunt. Councillor Hutchinson. Councillor Jackson. Councillor Johnson. Councillor Jones. Councillor Jopling. Councillor Kay. Councillor Kellett. Councillor Kennedy. Councillor Lines. Councillor Madison. Councillor Manchester. Councillor Marshall. Councillor Martin. Councillor E Maven. Councillor L Maven. Councillor McAlune. Councillor McDonnell. Councillor Mc... Sorry, councillor McGorn. Councillor McKenna. Councillor McKeon. Councillor McLean. Councillor McMahon. Councillor Miller. Councillor Moist. Councillor Malloy. Councillor Mull-Holland. Councillor Nichols. Councillor Nicholson. Councillor Oliver. Councillor Ormarod. Councillor Peak. Councillor Potts. Councillor Pringle. Sorry, councillor Pringle, councillor Quinn, was that vote for? Councillor Purvis. Councillor Jay Quinn. Councillor Es Quinn. Councillor Reed. Councillor Richardson. Councillor I Roberts. Councillor M I Roberts. Councillor Robinson. Councillor Robson. Councillor Rooney. Councillor Rollinson. Councillor Savery. Councillor Scott. Councillor Sexton. Councillor Shaw. Councillor Shield. Councillor Shuttleworth. Councillor Simmons. Councillor Simpson. Councillor Smith. Councillor Stead. Councillor Stelling.
Councillor Bainbridge.
Councillor Sterling. Councillor Stoker. Councillor Stubbs. Councillor Sirtes. Councillor Sutton Lloyd. Councillor Taylor. Councillor Tinsley. Councillor Townsend. Councillor Varty. Councillor Waldock. Councillor Walton. Councillor Watson. Councillor Wilks. Councillor M Wilson. Councillor S Wilson. Councillor Wood. Councillor York. And councillors there. Thank you. Just bear with us while we tally the votes, please.
members, members. councillor Bainbridge, seventy-two. councillor Quinn, fifty-three. no abstentions. councillor Bainbridge is elected as vice-chair.
I B Bainbridge of Cheshire Street East have been elected to the office of Vice-Chairman of the County Council. Declare that I take the office upon myself and I will duly and faithfully fulfil duties of it in accordance to the best of my judgment and ability. It gives me great pleasure and honour to have been appointed by my colleagues as Vice-Chairman of Durham County Council. I can assure you that I will work tirelessly to support Watson's chairman while serving our residents on your behalf. I would also like to thank Katie and Ozzy for the work over the previous year during the difficult times. thank you.
Members, can we move to item four? The minutes. Can I have a mover and a second to confirm the minutes of the meeting which was held on March the twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one? Seconda. Thank you. Other minutes agreed, members? Move on to item five, the declaration of interest. Does any member wish to declare an interest in relation to any item of business on this agenda? No? Okay. We'll move now on to item six. The statement from the returning officer. Can I ask John Hewitt, Returning Officer and Chief Executive, to present the statement? John?
Thank you Chair and good morning to new and returning members of the council this morning. So this report sets out the details of the persons elected to the County Council following the local elections which were held on the sixth of May and the details are set out in the report. I would like to take this opportunity to thank everybody involved in the organisation and running of the elections across County Durham this year. As everybody knows, it was an extremely complex and difficult election to run. So I would like to put on record my thanks to the staff and members for a successful election across County Durham. Can I also wish everyone elected a successful term at Durham County Council and the council is asked to note the report, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Can I move to item seven? Chairman's announcements. I want to take this opportunity to remind all councillors of their obligations under the code of conduct. I would kindly ask you all to address each other in the correct manner during meetings and would also request respect is shown from all sides of the chamber at all times. And finally, a reminder that all members need to complete the return of their declarations of interest within twenty-eight days of their election. That they reflect any appointments which may be agreed at this morning's meeting. Those who have already completed and returned their forms will need to check to make sure that there is nothing to further add since you've completed the form. Okay, and obviously to turn off mobile phones before the meeting. With that, members, can I move on to item eight? The adoption of the constitution. Can I ask the Head of Legal and Democratic Services to present this report? Helen?
Thank you, Chair. It's a requirement of the council's procedure rules that council approves the scheme of delegation as set out in part three of the constitution at its annual meeting. Accordingly, the constitution is presented for approval today. There are no further changes proposed to the constitution following those which were presented and agreed at the last council meeting on the twenty-fourth of March, twenty-twenty-one. As explained in paragraph ten of the report, adoption of the constitution at the annual meeting today does not prevent further changes being presented to the council during the course of the municipal year and/or as part of the regular annual review which may be required. Chair, the recommendations are set out at paragraph four to approve the scheme of delegations as set out in part three and authorise me as the Head of Legal and Democratic Services in consultation with the Constitutional Working Group to make any such changes to reflect decisions of the council or councils bodies and changes in legislation or to correct inaccuracies. Thank you.
Seconda. Are there any questions on the report, members? Does the council agree the report? Thank you, members. Can we move on to item nine? The election of the leader of the council. Can I have nominations for the position of leader of the County Council, please? If I can remind council that nominations will be voted upon without debate. John? Seconda. Any other nominations? Seconda, please. Okay, thank you. I'll pass over to Helen to take us through this election.
Thank you, Chair. I think we are almost resolved with our technical difficulty but not quite there. So on that basis, I suggest we agree to the request of a roll call and we keep the meeting going. So you'll be familiar with the process by now. I will read your names alphabetically and when I read your name, if you could indicate if you are voting for councillor Hopgood or councillor Marshall as leader of the council. Thank you. councillor Ablay. councillor Adam. councillor Adcock Forster. councillor Andrews. councillor Atkin- Jay Atkinson. councillor Pete Atkinson. councillor Avery. councillor Bainbridge. councillor A Beatty. councillor Kay Beatty. councillor Se Bell. councillor R Bell. councillor A Bell. councillor Binney. councillor Blakely. councillor Boyce. councillor L Brown. councillor Dee Brown. councillor Cairns. councillor Chaplow. councillor Jay Charlton. councillor R Charlton-Lenay. councillor Cochrane. councillor Coslett. councillor Court. councillor Crute. councillor Curra. councillor Denali. councillor Duffy. councillor Earley. councillor Elmer. councillor Fantaro Derby. councillor Fenwick. councillor Fletcher. councillor Freeman. councillor Griffiths. councillor Gunn. councillor Hall. councillor Hampson. councillor Haney. councillor Hanson. councillor Hawley. councillor Heaviside. councillor Henderson. councillor Hennig. councillor Higgins. councillor Holmes. councillor Hood. councillor Hopgood. councillor Hovles. councillor Howarth. councillor Howie. councillor Hunt. councillor Hutchinson. councillor Jackson. councillor Johnson. councillor Jones. councillor Jopling. councillor Kay. councillor Kellett. councillor Kennedy. councillor Lines. councillor Madison. councillor Manchester. councillor Marshall. councillor Martin. councillor E Mavin. councillor L Mavin. councillor McAlune. councillor McDonald. councillor McGorn. councillor McKenna. councillor McKeon. councillor McLean. councillor McMahon. councillor Miller. councillor Moist. councillor Malloy. councillor Mullholland. councillor Nichols. councillor Nicholson. councillor Oliver. councillor Ormarod. councillor Peak. councillor Potts. councillor Pringle. councillor Purvis. councillor Jay Quinn. councillor Esquin. councillor Reed. councillor Richardson. councillor I Roberts. councillor M I Roberts. councillor Robinson. councillor Robson. councillor Rooney. councillor Rolinson. councillor Savory. councillor Scott. councillor Sexton. councillor Shaw. councillor Shield. councillor Shuttleworth. councillor Simmons. councillor Simpson. councillor Smith. councillor Stead. councillor Stelling.
councillor Hopgood.
councillor Sterling. councillor Stoker. councillor Stubbs. councillor Sirtes. councillor Sutton Lloyd. councillor Taylor. councillor Tinsley. councillor Townsend. councillor Varty. councillor Waldock. councillor Walton. councillor Watson. councillor Wilkes. councillor Wilson, M Wilson. councillor S Wilson. councillor Wood. councillor York. councillors air. And it's councillor Andrews back in the room. Just bear with us whilst we tally up the votes, please.
Members. Councillor Hopgood, seventy-two. Councillor Marshall, fifty-three. Abstentions, zero. Councillor Hopgood is selected as leader. Councillor Hopgood, Amanda, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to everyone who's voted for me today. I will be leader of the whole council, regardless of political parties. And this is a new era for County Durham. Not only is it the first non-Labour leader, but the first female leader ever for the County Council. So I hope we can embrace this and a new way forward. So thank you to everybody.
Call, Councillor Marshall, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Chair. On behalf of the Labour Group, could I congratulate Amanda and her new coalition as we move forward? Clearly for all of us, this is uncharted territory with no party having overall control of Durham County Council. As a Labour Group, we have fifty-three members and we will come together to work in the best interests of everyone across the county.
Can we ask for, just to say a thanks to them, Amanda, please?
Yeah, and Chair, I just want to, just to remind members that we don't need to look too far around the room about the legacy and the way this council's been led.
Sorry, sorry, Call.
With a firm financial foot and plans to invest in thirty thousand jobs in a pipeline of investment.
It's not a political speech. Thank you, thank you, Call, please, sit down, please.
Sorry, Chair, I thought I was giving the floor.
No, no, to, for the leader of the council now.
Well, I wish them, wish them well and I hope this isn't the way that things are going to be run in the future.
Okay, thank you, thank you. We'll go on to item ten. Leaders' announcement of deputy leader and cabinet members. Can I ask the leader of the council to make your announcement, please? Councillor Hopgood?
Thank you, Chair. So in reading out the portfolios and the cabinet positions, I'm just going to read out the titles and then the whole list will be circulated after the meeting. So leader of the council, Councillor Amanda Hopgood. Statutory deputy leader with portfolio for finance, Councillor Richard Bell. Adult and health services, Councillor Paul Sexton. Children and young people services, Councillor Ted Henderson. Digital and customer services, Councillor Susan McDonnell. Economy and partnerships, Councillor Elizabeth Scott. Neighborhoods and climate change, Councillor Mark Wilks. Equality and inclusion, Councillor Alan Shield. Resources, investments and assets, Councillor James Rolinson. And rural communities and highways, Councillor John Shuttleworth. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Amanda. Can we move on to item eleven, members? An appointment of council bodies and allocation of seats to political groups under section fifteen of the Local Government and Housing Act of nineteen eighty-nine. Can I ask the head of legal and democratic services to present the report, please?
Thank you, Chair. The purpose of this report is for council to appoint the committees and the corporate parenting panel in accordance with the council's constitution and to determine the allocation of seats amongst the six political groups on the council. Paragraph five of the report sets out the legislative requirements regarding political balance and the principles to be followed when allocating seats. Appendix two sets out the schedule of committees in the corporate parenting panel and the proposed distribution of seats across the six groups. And appendix three sets out the composition of the Health and Wellbeing Board. Chair, the recommendations are set out at paragraphs four A to F of the report.
Can I have a mover, please?
Can we wait for the microphone, please, Councillor Brown?
Okay, Councillor Liz Brown, Neville's Cross Division, on behalf of the Joint Administration, formally move the report as written.
Can I have a second, please?
Joan Nicholson, Anfield Plain Division, I would like to formally second this motion on behalf of the Joint Administration.
Are there any questions on the report? Does the council agree the recommendations detailed in the report? Thank you. Can we move to item twelve? Appointment of chairs and vice-chairs committees and subcommittees listed on the agenda. Can I, can I have nominations for the appointment of chairs and vice-chairs of the committees and subcommittees listed on the agenda? Got one there? Okay.
Chair, sorry to interject. Could I just address a procedural point? So I understand that there will be a series of nominations. So I think the easiest way of doing this will be to take it by each appointment per committee as they appear in the agenda. So the first position that council will be nominating to will be the Chair of Appeals and Complaints Committee. Once we've got the nominations in, I will then explain the voting process.
Okay. Nominations, please.
Chair, thank you, Helen. On behalf of the Joint Administration, I propose Councillor Terry Duffy as Chair of the Appeals and Complaints Committee.
Second, please.
On behalf of the Joint Administration, I'd like to second that motion.
Any other nominations? Councillor Marshall, call.
Chair, could I formally propose Councillor Danny Wood as chairman of Appeals and Complaints, please?
Could I have a second, please?
Second, Councillor Danny Wood, please.
Okay. Helen?
Thank you, Chair. So we hope that we have resolved the technical issue, which will enable us to vote on these appointments using our electronic voting equipment. So you've got your handsets in front of you. In a moment, there will be a beep to indicate that the vote is open. I will also confirm verbally that the vote is open because we're not sure how loud the beep will be in here compared to when we were in the council chamber. The nominees for election of the Chair of Appeals and Complaints Committee will appear in your handset. It will be number one for Councillor Duffy, number two for Councillor Wood, and three to abstain. If you accidentally press the wrong button, if you press the right button, it will correct your vote. So it will be number one for Councillor Duffy and two for Councillor Wood. Is that clear?
Sorry, Call?
Thanks, Chair. Just on a point of procedure, just to sort of ask, will the votes be recorded and available after the meeting for all of the voting on the committees?
If you would, if you would like to request a recorded vote, you'll require ten members to support you.
Yeah, okay.
Ten members?
So we have, we have ten members supported a recorded vote, so we will record the vote. What will happen is the names of members and the way in which they voted will be taken down and recorded in the minutes of the meeting. But we will make them available to group leaders as soon as possible after the meeting so that you don't have to wait for the minutes. Just bear with me and I'll wait for the vote to open. As I say, it's one for Councillor Duffy, two for Councillor Wood, three to abstain. Okay, so we can close the vote.
Nominations for Chair of the Appeals and Complaints Committee, Councillor Duffy, seventy-two. Councillor Wood, fifty-three. There was no abstentions. Councillor Duffy is elected. Members, nominations for the next one, for Vice Chair of the Appeals and Complaints Committee. Councillor? Nominations?
On behalf of the Joint Administration, I propose Eric Maven as Vice Chair of the Appeals and Complaints Committee.
Second, please.
On behalf of the Joint Administration, I'd like to second that motion.
Councillor Marshall, call.
Could I formally propose Councillor Kevin Shaw as Vice Chair of Appeals and Complaints, please?
Second, please.
Can I have a second, Councillor Kevin Shaw, please?
Helen?
Thank you, Chair. The process will be the same, just give us a few seconds to load the vote. If you are voting for Councillor Eric Maven for Vice Chair of the Appeals and Complaints Committee, it will be number one. If you're voting for Kevin Shaw, it will be number two. Three to abstain. And again, if you press the incorrect button, pressing the right one will rectify your vote. So it's one for Councillor Eric Maven and two for Kevin Shaw. If you just give me a moment, Will, I'll confirm when the vote's open. The vote's open, thank you. Okay, we can close the vote.
Okay, members. Nominations for Vice Chair of the Appeals and Complaints Committee, Councillor Maven, seventy-two. Councillor Shaw, fifty-three. No abstentions. Councillor Maven is elected. Okay, members, we'll move on. Nominations for the Chair of the Audit Committee. Nominations, please, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. On behalf of the Joint Administration, I propose Councillor Alex Watson as Chair of the Audit Committee.
Second, please.
On behalf of the Joint Administration, I would like to formally second that proposal.
Any more nominations? Councillor Marshall, call.
Chair, could I formally propose Councillor Chris Fletcher as Chair of the Audit Committee?
Second, please.
Chair, can I have a second, Chris Fletcher, please?
Helen?
Thank you, Chair. So we'll just load that into the voting system. Once the vote is open, it will be number one to vote for Councillor Alex Watson as Chair of Audit Committee or number two for Councillor Chris Fletcher and number three to abstain. I'll confirm when the vote's open, thank you. The vote's open. Councillor Andrews, could you raise your handset, please? It's okay, the vote's recorded, thank you. We can close the vote.
Members, nomination for the Chair of the Audit Committee was as follows: councillor Watson, seventy-two; councillor Fletcher, fifty-three; there was no abstentions, councillor Watson is elected. Members, nominations for the Vice Chair of the Audit Committee, please? Anybody mov... moving it? Call.
Chair, could I formally move councillor Louise Fennick, please?
Any more nominations? A second, sorry, Rowan.
Chair, I second councillor Louise Fennick.
Any more nominations? So only one nomination, can we agree the appointment?
Agreed.
Agreed. Members, nominations for Chair of the Chief Officers' Appointment Committee, any nominations? Councillor?
Chair, I'd like to nominate councillor Hopgood as Chair of the Chief... of Appointments Committee.
Second, please.
On behalf of the Joint Administration, I'd like to second that.
Any no... any further nominations? Just before I go on, can I just say councillor Fennick, you are Vice Chair of that committee, sorry about that. With only one nomination, councillor Hopgood is Chair of that committee, the Chief Officers' Appointment Committee, thank you. Sorry, did members agree this? Thank you. Getting ahead of myself here. Nominations for the Vice Chair of the Chief Officers' Appointments Committee, any nominations? Councillor?
Chair, on behalf of the Joint Administration, I'd like to nominate councillor Richard Bell.
Second, please.
On behi... on behalf of the Joint Administration, I'd like to formally second that.
Any other nominations? No nominations with that. Richard, you are Richard Bell. Councillor Gray, that Richard moves? Thank you, members. Members, nominations for the Chair of Highways Committee, any nominations? Councillor?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to nominate councillor Richard Omerod as Chair of the Highways Committee, this is on behalf of the Joint Administration.
Second, please.
On behalf of the Joint Administration, I'd like to formally second that proposal.
Any other nominations, councillor Marshall, call?
I'd like to formally propose councillor Charlie Key as Chair of Highways Committee.
Second, please.
Second councillor Charlie Key, Chair.
Helen.
Thank you, Chair, we will load the vote, it will be number one to vote for councillor Omerod as Chair of the Highways Committee, or number two for councillor Key. If you press the ro... or three to abstain, and if you press the wrong button, pressing the right one will correct your vote, and I'll confirm when the vote's open, thank you. Vote's open. Okay, we can close the vote.
Members, nominations for Chair of the Highways Committee are as follows: councillor Omroyd, seventy-two; councillor Key, fifty-three; abstentions, zero; councillor Omerod is elected as Chair of that committee. Members, can we have nominations for the Vice Chair of the Highways Committee, please? Nominations? Councillor Marshall, nominations for Vice Chair of the Highways Committee, call?
Chair, I'd like to formally move councillor David Boyce.
Any more nominations? Second, please, Rowan.
Chair, second councillor David Boyce, please.
Any more nominations? Members, can we accept this for Vice Chair for councillor Boyce? Agreed, thank you. Councillor Boyce... Councillor Boyce, Vice Chair of the Highways Committee. Members, nominations for the Chair of the Statutory Licensing Committee, nominations, councillor?
Councillor Elizabeth Scott Neville's Cross, on behalf of the Joint Administration, I would like to propose councillor David Brown.
Second, please.
On behalf of the Joint Administration, I'd like to formally second that motion.
Thank you. Any other nominations, councillor Marshall, call?
Chair, I'd like to formally propose councillor Carol Hampson as Chair of the Statutory Licensing Committee.
Second, please.
Chair, second councillor Carol Hampson, please.
Thank you. Helen.
So when we load the vote, voting for the Chair of Statutory Licensing Committee, the first vote, the first nominee within the handset will be councillor Brown, and the second nominee will be councillor Hampson, so it's one to vote for councillor Brown and two for councillor Hampson, three for any abstentions, thank you. Just to confirm, the vote's open. Okay, we can close the vote.
Members, votes for the nominations for the Chair of the Statutory Licensing Committee is as follows: councillor Brown, seventy-two; councillor Hampson, fifty-three; no abstentions, councillor Brown is appointed Chair. Members, nominations for the first Vice Chair, because there's two Vice Chairs of the Statutory Licensing Committee, this is for the first Vice Chair. Any nominations, councillor?
On behalf of the Joint Administration, I propose councillor Liz Brown.
Second, please.
On behalf of the Joint Administration, I formally second that proposal.
Any more nominations, councillor Marshall, call?
Chair, could I formally propose councillor Marion Wilson?
Second, please.
Chair, second councillor Marion Wilson, please.
Thank you. Helen.
When we load the vote, councillor Liz Brown will be number one for first Vice Chair of the Statutory Licensing Committee, and it will be number two if you wish to vote for councillor Marion Wilson. So that's vote one for councillor Liz Brown and two for Marion Wilson, and I'll confirm when the vote's open. Vote's open. Okay, we can close the vote. Okay, Michael?
Members, the nominations for the first Vice Chair of the Statutory License Committee is as follows: Liz Brown, councillor Liz Brown, seventy-two; councillor Marion Wilson, fifty-three; abstentions, zero; councillor Brown is appointed first Vice Chair. Members, nominations for the second Vice... That's Vice Chair, isn't it, Helen?
Yes, second Vice Chair.
Second Vice Chair of the Statutory Licensing Subcommittee.
Sorry, committee. Apologies. Sorry, apologies, Chair, that's my fault, we are looking for nominations of the second Chair of the Statutory Licensing Committee, not the Subcommittee, it's the main committee. So it's nominations for the second Vice Chair of the Statutory Licensing Committee.
Nominations, councillor?
On behalf of the Joint Administration, I would like to nominate councillor Jan Blakely.
Second, please.
On behalf of the Joint Administration, I would formally second the proposal.
Any other nominations, councillor Marshall, call?
Chair, I'd like to formally nominate councillor Shirley Quinn.
Helen. Sorry, I keep missing you out, second.
Can I formally second councillor Shirley Quinn, please?
Thank you very much, sorry about that. Helen.
So we will open the vote, and it will be to select one to vote for councillor Blakely for the second Vice Chair on the Statutory Licensing Committee, or number two for councillor Quinn, and three to abstain. And as always, if you press the wrong button, pressing the right button will correct it, and I'll confirm when the vote's open. Vote's open. We can close the vote.
Members the nominations for the second vice-chair of the statutory licensing committee is as follows councillor Blakie seventy-two councillor Quinn fifty-three there was no abstentions councillor Blakie is appointed. Members the next nominations is for the statutory licence subcommittee on this appointment there are three chairs we're going for the first chair nominations please for the first chair of the statutory licensing subcommittee. Move please.
On behalf of the joint administration I would like to nominate councillor David Brown.
Second please.
On behalf of the joint administration I'd formally second that proposal.
Any other nominations councillor Marshall call?
Chair I'd like to formally nominate councillor Marion Wilson.
Second.
Can I second councillor Marion Wilson please Chair.
So once we've opened the vote if you're voting for councillor David Brown for the first chair of the statutory licensing subcommittee it's number one and number two if you're voting for councillor Marion Wilson and I'll confirm when the votes open. Votes open. Okay we can close the vote.
Members the nominations for the first chair of the statutory licence and subcommittee is as follows councillor Brown seventy-two councillor Wilson fifty-three no abstentions councillor Brown is appointed the first chair of the statutory licensing and subcommittee. Members nominations for the second chair of the statutory licensing subcommittee any nominations? Councillor?
On behalf of the joint administration I would like to nominate councillor Liz Brown.
Second please.
On behalf of the joint administration I'd formally second that proposal.
Any other nominations councillor Marshall call?
Chair could I formally propose councillor Carol Hampson?
Second please.
Second councillor Carol Hampson please Chair.
Thank you Helen.
So this is for the second chair of the statutory licensing subcommittee it will be number one for councillor Liz Brown number two for councillor Carol Hampson and three to abstain I'll confirm when the votes open. Votes now open. Councillor Andrew Jackson could you raise your handset please? Michael. Okay we can close the vote.
Members the voting for the second chair of the statutory licence subcommittee is as follows councillor Liz Brown seventy-two councillor Carol Hampson fifty-three no abstentions councillor Liz Brown is appointed second chair of the statutory licence subcommittee. Members nominations for the third chair of the statutory licensing subcommittee nominations please councillor.
On behalf of the joint administration I would like to nominate councillor Jan Blakie.
Second please.
On behalf of the joint administration I'd like to formally second that proposal.
Further nominations councillor Marshall call?
Thanks Chair I'd like to formally move councillor Shirley Quinn.
Second please.
Second councillor Shirley Quinn please Chair.
Thank you Helen.
Thank you Chair so when we open the vote if you select one to vote for councillor Jan Blakie or two for councillor Shirley Quinn and this is for the third chair of the statutory licensing subcommittee. Votes open. Closing the vote.
Members the third chair of the statutory licence subcommittee is as follows councillor Blakie seventy-two councillor Quinn fifty-three there was no abstentions councillor Blakie is appointed. Members nominations for the chair of the general licensing and registration committee any nominations councillor?
Can I just clarify Chair this is the first of three is that correct?
No this is the main committee the next once we've done we'll point to the chair and vice-chair and then we'll move on to the subcommittee which is three chairs.
Thank you on behalf of the joint administration I would like to nominate councillor David Stoker.
Second please.
On behalf of the joint administration I'd formally second that proposal.
Any further nominations councillor Marshall call?
Could I formally move councillor Marion Wilson please?
Second please.
Second councillor Marion Wilson please Chair.
Thank you Helen.
When we open the vote for the nominations for the chair of the general licensing and registration committee it's number one to vote for councillor David Stoker and number two to vote for councillor Marion Wilson abstentions is three. Votes open. Okay we can close the vote.
Members the results of the general licensing and registration committee for chair is as follows councillor Stoker seventy-two councillor Wilson fifty-three there was no abstentions councillor Stoker is appointed chair. Members nominations for the vice-chair of the general licensing and registration committee any nominations councillor?
Thank you on behalf of the joint administration I would like to propose councillor Cathy Hunt.
Second please.
On behalf of the joint administration I'd formally second that proposal.
Any further nominations for this councillor Marshall?
Thanks Chair formally propose councillor Carol Hampson.
Thanks. Second please.
Second councillor Carol Hampson please Chair.
Helen.
So when the vote opens for the vice-chair of the general licensing and registration committee it will be number one to vote for councillor Cathy Hunt and number two to vote for councillor Carol Hampson three to abstain thank you. Votes open. Okay we can close the vote.
Members the results for the vice-chair of the general licensing and registration committee is as follows councillor Hunt seventy-two councillor Hampson fifty-three there was no abstentions councillor Hunt is appointed. Members nominations for the first chair of the general licensing and registration subcommittees there will be three chairs on this nominations councillor?
Chair on behalf of the joint administration I would like to propose councillor David Brown.
Second please.
On behalf of the joint administration I'd formally second that proposal.
Any further nominations councillor Marshall call?
Could I formally propose councillor Marion Wilson?
Second please.
Second councillor Marion Wilson please Chair.
Thank you Helen.
So when the vote opens for the first chair of the general licensing and registration subcommittee it will be number one to vote for councillor David Brown and number two to vote for councillor Marion Wilson three to abstain. Votes open. Votes open. Okay, we're going to close the vote.
Members, the results for the first chair of the General Licensing and Registration Subcommittee is as follows: councillor David Brown, seventy-one; councillor Wilson, fifty-three. No abstentions. Councillor Brown is appointed. Members, nominations for the second chair of the General Licensing and Registration Subcommittee. Any nominations? Councillor?
On behalf of the Joint Administration, I would like to propose councillor Liz Brown.
Second please.
On behalf of the Joint Administration, I'd like to formally second that proposal.
Any further nominations? Councillor Marshall, call.
Chair, could I formally move councillor Carol Hampson?
Can I have a second please?
Second councillor Carol Hampson please Chair.
Thank you. Helen.
So when we open the vote for the second chair of the General Licensing and Registration Subcommittee, it will be number one to vote for councillor Liz Brown, and number two to vote for councillor Carol Hampson, number three to abstain. Thank you. Votes open. Close the vote.
Members, second chair of the General Licensing and Registration Subcommittee is as follows: councillor Brown, seventy-one; councillor Hampson, fifty-four. Abstentions nil. Councillor Liz Brown is appointed. Members, nomination for the third chair of the General Licensing and Registration Subcommittee. Nominations please, councillor?
On behalf of the Joint Administration, I would like to nominate councillor Jan Blakey.
Second please.
On behalf of the Joint Administration, I'd like to formally second that proposal.
Any other nominations? Councillor Marshall, call.
Chair, I'd formally like to move councillor Shirley Quinn.
Second, sorry Ross, second please.
Second councillor Shirley Quinn please Chair.
Thank you. Helen.
So when we open the vote, it will be for the third chair of the General Licensing and Registration Subcommittee. Select one to vote for councillor Jan Blakey, two to vote for councillor Shirley Quinn, and three for any abstentions. Thank you. Votes open. Okay, we can close the vote.
Members, results for the third chair of the General Licensing and Registration Subcommittee is as follows: councillor Blakey, seventy-two; councillor Quinn, fifty-three. No abstentions. Councillor Blakey is appointed. Members, nominations for the chair of Standards Committee please. Any nominations? Councillor?
Thank you Chair. On behalf of the Joint Administration, I'd like to propose councillor Joan Nicholson as chair of the Standards Committee.
Second please.
Thank you Chair. On behalf of the Joint Administration, I second councillor Jan Nicholson.
Any other nominations? Councillor Marshall, call.
Could I formally propose councillor Bill Kellett?
Second please.
Second councillor Bill Kellett please Chair.
Thank you. Helen.
Okay, this is the nominations for the chair of Standards Committee. Select one to vote for councillor Joan Nicholson, two to vote for councillor Bill Kellett, three to abstain. Votes open. Okay, we can close the vote.
Members, chair of Standards Committee, results as follows: councillor Nicholson, seventy-two; councillor Kellett, fifty-three. Abstentions, none. Councillor Nicholson, you are appointed chair of Standards. Members, nominations for the vice-chair of the Standards Committee. Nominations please? Call. Councillor Marshall, call. For the vice-chair of Standards.
Yeah, thanks Chair. Can I formally nominate councillor Fraser Tinsley please?
Second please.
Second councillor Fraser Tinsley please Chair.
Any other nominations? Members, with just one nomination, can we accept that nomination? Councillor Tinsley is vice-chair of the Standards Committee. Members, it's been a long morning. I suggest now that we have a break for fifteen minutes. And if you could want to leave the hall, please leave by that entrance and come in by that entrance. A fifteen-minute break, comfort break. Do it, yeah. Good to go. Good to go. Good to go, members, right. Members, can I have nominations for the Chair of the County Planning Committee, please? Councillor?
Thank you, Chair. On behalf of the Joint Administration, I'd like to propose Councillor George Richardson as Chair of the County Planning Committee.
Second, please.
On behalf of the Joint Administration, I'd like to formally second that proposal.
Any other nominations? Councillor Marshall, keep your glasses on. Okay, call.
Chair, can I formally move Councillor Simon Wilson without me glasses on?
Well done, call. Second, please.
Second, Councillor Simon Wilson, please, Chair.
Thank you very much. Helen?
Thank you, Chair. So this is the vote for the Chair of the County Planning Committee. Select number one for Councillor George Richardson and number two for Councillor Simon Wilson. Three to abstain. I'll confirm when the votes open. Votes open.
I'll just close. I'll close it because it's clear.
Closing the vote.
Members, the results for the Chair of the County Planning Committee are as follows. Councillor Richardson, seventy; Councillor Wilson, fifty-three. No abstentions. Councillor Richardson is appointed. Members, can we nominate for Vice Chair of the County Planning Committee? Nominations, please, Councillor?
Thank you, Chair. On behalf of the Joint Administration, I'd like to propose Councillor Alan Bell as Vice Chair of the County Planning Committee.
Second, please.
On behalf of the Joint Administration, I'd like to formally second that proposal.
Any other nominations? Councillor Marshall, call.
Could I formally propose Councillor Paul Taylor, please?
Second, please.
Second, Councillor Paul Taylor, please, Chair.
Thank you. Helen?
So we're voting for the Vice Chair of the County Planning Committee. Select number one for Councillor Alan Bell and two to vote for Councillor Paul Taylor and three for any abstentions. Votes open. Closing the vote.
Members, results for the Vice Chair of the County Planning Committee is as follows. Counselor Bell, seventy-two; Counselor Taylor, fifty-two. No abstentions. Counselor Bell is appointed Vice Chair of the County Planning Committee. Members, nominations for Chair of Area Planning Committee North. Nominations for Chair of Area Planning Committee North. Counselor?
Thank you, Chair. On behalf of the Joint Administration, I should like to propose Counselor Michael McGon as Chair of the Area Planning Committee North.
Seconda, please.
On behalf of the Joint Administration, I'd like to formally second that proposal.
Any further nominations for that? Rob?
Chair, can I nominate Counselor Carl Marshall, please, for Chair of North Area Planning Committee?
Seconda, please.
Chair, can I second Carl Marshall?
Helen?
So nominations for the Chair of the Area Planning Committee North. Vote with button one to vote for Counselor McGon, button two for Counselor Marshall, three for any abstentions. Votes open. We can close the vote.
Nominations for Chair of the Area Planning Committee North. Counselor McGon, seventy-two; Counselor Marshall, fifty-three. No abstentions. Counselor McGon is appointed Chair of the Northern Area Planning Committee. Members, could I have nominations for the Vice Chair of the Area Planning Committee North, please? Counselor?
Thank you, Chair. On behalf of the Joint Administration, I would like to nominate Alex, Counselor Alex Watson as Vice Chair of the Area Planning Committee North.
Seconda, please.
On behalf of the Joint Administration, I'd like to formally second that proposal.
Thank you. Any other nominations for Vice Chair of the Northern Planning Committee? No nominations for Vice Chair. Members, can we take Counselor Watson's nomination? Thank you, Counselor Watson. You are Vice Chair of the Area Planning North. Members, nominations for Chair of Area Planning Committee Central and East. Nominations for Chair of Area Planning Committee Central and East. Counselor?
Thank you, Chair. On behalf of the Joint Administration, I would like to propose Counselor David Freeman as Chair of the Area Planning Committee Central and East.
Seconda, please.
On behalf of the Joint Administration, I'd like to formally second that proposal.
Any other nominations? Counselor Marshall, call.
Could I formally propose Counselor Paul Taylor, please?
Seconda, please.
Second, Counselor Paul Taylor, please, Chair.
Thank you. Helen?
So this is the vote for the Chair of the Area Planning Committee Central and East. Select one if you would like to vote for Counselor David Freeman or two for voting for Counselor Paul Taylor, three is to abstain. Thank you. Votes open. Closing the vote.
Members, the Chair of the Area Planning Committee results are as, Central and East are as follows. Counselor Freeman, seventy-two; Counselor Taylor, fifty-three. No abstentions. Counselor Freeman is appointed Chair of the Area Planning Committee Central and East. Members, can we have applications for the Vice Chair of Area Planning Committee Central and East, please? Nominations, please. Nominations for the Vice Chair of Area Planning Committee Central and East. Any nominations? Counselor Marshall, call.
Could I formally propose Counselor Stacey Deanley, please?
Seconda, please.
Second, Counselor Stacey Deanley, please, Chair.
Helen? With only one nomination, members, can we take that appointment as taken to Counsel Deane? Counselor Deane, you are the Vice Chair of the Area Planning Committee Central and East. Members, can we have nominations for Chair of the Area Planning Committee South and West? Nominations for Chair of Area Planning Committee South and West. Nominations, please.
Thank you, Chair. On behalf of the Joint Administration, I should like to propose Counselor George Richardson as Chair of the Area Planning Committee South and West.
Seconda, please.
Thank you, Chair. On behalf of the Joint Administration, I'd like to formally second that proposal.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Counselor Marshall, call.
Chair, can I formally propose Counselor Matt Johnson, please?
Seconda, please.
Second, Counselor Matt Johnson, please, Chair.
Thank you. Helen?
So this is the vote for the Chair of the Area Planning Committee South and West. Select number one to vote for Counselor Richardson and number two to vote for Counselor Johnson. Three is to abstain. Thank you. Votes open. Okay, we'll close the vote.
Members, the results for the Chair of the Area Planning Committee South and West is as follows. Counselor Richardson, seventy-one; Counselor Johnson, fifty-three. There was no abstentions. Counselor Richardson is appointed Chair of Area Planning Committee South and West. Members, can we have nominations for the Vice Chair of the Area Planning Committee South and West, please? Counselor?
Thank you, Chair. On behalf of the Joint Administration, I should like to propose Counselor Anita Savery as Vice Chair of the Area Planning Committee South and West.
Seconda, please.
On behalf of the Joint Administration, I'd like to formally second that proposal.
Any other nominations? Counselor Marshall, call.
Could I formally propose Counselor Shirley Quinn?
Seconda, please.
Second, Counselor Shirley Quinn, please, Chair.
Thank you. Helen?
Chair, can I just check I heard that correctly? Did you, Shirley Quinn? So this is the Chair for, sorry, the vote for the Vice Chair of Area Planning Committee South and West. Select one on your handsets to vote for Counselor Anita Savery or two to vote for Counselor Shirley Quinn, three to abstain. Votes open. Okay, we can close the vote.
Members, the results for Vice Chair of the Area Planning Committee South and West is as follows. Counselor Savery, seventy-one; Counselor Quinn, fifty-three. There was no abstentions. Counselor Savery is the Vice Chair of the Area Planning Committee South and West. Members, that concludes the appointments to the non-executive regulatory committees. We move on now to nominations for the Chair of the Pensions Fund Committee. Nominations, please. Pensions Fund. Counselor Marshall, call.
Could I formally move Counselor Bill Kellett?
Seconda, please.
Second, Counselor Bill Kellett, please, Chair.
Any other nominations for the Chair of the Pensions Fund? With that, members, can we accept the nomination of Counselor Kellett? Counselor Kellett as Chairman of the Pensions Fund. Members, nominations for the Vice Chair of the Pensions Fund Committee. Any nominations, Counselor?
Thank you, Chair. On behalf of the Joint Administration, I should like to propose Counselor Mark Abley as Vice Chair of Pension Fund Committee.
Seconda, please.
Thank you, Chair. On behalf of the Joint Administration, I'd like to formally... Thank you Chair. On behalf of the Joint Administration, I'd like to formally second that proposal.
Any other nominations councillor Marshall call?
Chair, I'd like to formally move councillor Jim Atkinson.
Second.
Second councillor Jim Atkinson please Chair.
Helen?
So this is the vote for the Vice Chair of the Pension Fund Committee. Select one for councillor Mark Abley, two for councillor Jim Atkinson, three to abstain. Votes open. Okay, we're closing the vote.
Members, the results for the Vice Chair of the Pension Fund Committee is as follows. Councillor Abley seventy-one, councillor Atkinson fifty-three. No abstentions. So councillor Abley is the Vice Chair of the Pensions Committee. Members, nominations for the Chair of the Corporate Parenting Panel. Councillor?
Thank you Chair. On behalf of the Joint Administration, I should like to propose councillor Mamie Simmons as Chair of the Corporate Parenting Panel. Thank you.
Second please.
Thank you Chair. On behalf of the Joint Administration, I'd like to formally second that proposal.
Any other nominations councillor Marshall call?
Chair, could I formally move councillor Chris Varty?
Second please.
Second councillor Chris Varty please.
Thank you. Helen?
So this is the vote for the Chair of the Corporate Parenting Panel. Select one for councillor Mamie Simmons, two for councillor Chris Varty, three for any abstentions. Votes open. Closing the vote.
Members, the results for the Chair of the Corporate Parenting Panel is as follows. Councillor Simmons seventy-one, councillor Varty fifty-three. No abstentions. Councillor Simmons is selected as Chair of the Corporate Parenting Panel. Members, can we have nominations for the Vice Chair of the Corporate Parenting Panel please? Councillor?
Thank you Chair. On behalf of the Joint Administration, I should like to propose councillor Michelle Walton as Vice Chair of the Corporate Parenting Panel. Thank you.
Second please.
Thank you Chair. On behalf of the Joint Administration, I'd like to formally second that proposal.
Any other nominations councillor Marshall call?
Could I formally move councillor Robert Adcock Foster please?
Second please.
Second councillor Robert Adcock Foster please Chair.
Thank you. Helen?
So this is the vote for the Vice Chair of the Corporate Parenting Panel. Select one to vote for councillor Walton and two to vote for councillor Adcock Foster, three to abstain. Votes open. Councillor Heaviside, could you raise your handset please? Closing the vote.
Members, the results for the Vice Chair of the Corporate Parenting Panel is as follows. Councillor Walton seventy-one, councillor Adcock Foster fifty-three. Abstentions none. Councillor Walton is appointed Vice Chair of the Corporate Parenting Panel. Members, we now move to the Overview and Scrutiny Committees. Nominations for the Chair of Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Management Board please. Councillor?
Thank you Chair. On behalf of the Joint Administration, I should like to propose councillor Craig Martin as Chair of the Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Management Board. Thank you.
Second please.
Thank you Chair. On behalf of the Joint Administration, I'd like to formally second that proposal.
Thank you. Any other nominations councillor Marshall call?
Chair, could I formally propose councillor Rob Crute?
Second please.
Chair, could I second councillor Crute please?
Thank you. Helen?
Okay, this is the vote for the Chair of the Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Management Board. If you would like to vote for councillor Craig Martin, select one on your handset and for councillor Rob Crute, please select two on your handset and it's three to abstain. Okay, closing the vote.
Members, the results for the Chair of the Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Management Board is as follows. Councillor Martin seventy-one, councillor Crute fifty-three. No abstentions. Councillor Martin, you are appointed Chair of the Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Management Board. Members, nominations for Vice Chair of the Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Committee. Councillor?
Thank you Chair. On behalf of the Joint Administration, I should like to propose councillor Chris Lines as Vice Chair of the Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Management Board. Thank you.
Second please.
Thank you Chair. On behalf of the Joint Administration, I'd like to formally second that proposal.
Any other nominations for this position councillor Marshall call?
Can I formally move councillor Alison Beatty?
Second please.
Second councillor Alison Beatty please Chair.
Thank you. Helen?
Can I just check I've heard that correctly? Alison Beatty? So this is for the Vice Chair of the Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Committee. Number one, select number one for councillor Chris Lines, number two for councillor Alison Beatty, three to abstain. Closing the vote.
Members, the results for the Vice Chair of the Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Management Board is as follows. Councillor Lines seventy, councillor Beatty fifty-three. Abstentions none. Councillor Lines is appointed Vice Chair of the Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Management Board. Members, nominations for Chair of the Children and Young People's Scrutiny Committee please. Councillor?
Thank you Chair. On behalf of the Joint Administration, I should like to propose councillor Chris Hood as Chair of the Children and Young People's Scrutiny Committee. Thank you.
Second please.
Thank you Chair. On behalf of the Joint Administration, I'd like to formally second that proposal.
Thank you. Any other nominations for this position councillor Marshall call?
Chair, can I formally propose councillor Stacey Dean-Ale, please?
Second, sorry Rob, keep, second please.
Second councillor Stacey Dean-Ale please.
Thank you.
So this is for the Chair of Children and Young People's Scrutiny Committee. Select one to vote for councillor Chris Hood or two to vote for councillor Stacey Dean-Ale.
Committee please councillor.
Thank you Chair on behalf of the Joint Administration I should like to propose councillor James Coslett as Vice Chair of the Children's and Young People's Scrutiny Committee thank you.
Second please.
Thank you Chair on behalf of the Joint Administration I'd like to formally second that proposal.
Thank you any other nominations for this position councillor Marshall call.
Chair can I formally propose councillor Stacey Dean-Alely please.
Second please.
Second councillor Stacey Dean-Alely please Chair.
Thank you.
This is for the Chair of the Children and Young People's Scrutiny Committee select one on your handsets to vote for councillor James Coslett or two to vote for councillor Chris Varty three to abstain. Votes open. Closing the vote.
Members the result for the Chair of the Children and Young People's Scrutiny Committee is as follows councillor Hood seventy councillor Dean-Alely hope I got that right fifty-three abstentions zero councillor Hood is appointed Chair of the Children's and Young People's Scrutiny Group. Members nominations for the Vice Chair of the Children and Young People's Scrutiny Committee please councillor.
Thank you Chair on behalf of the Joint Administration I should like to propose councillor James Coslett as Vice Chair of the Children and Young People's Scrutiny Committee thank you.
Thank you Chair on behalf of the Joint Administration I'd like to formally second that proposal.
Nominations call.
Can I formally propose councillor Chris Varty please.
Second please.
Second councillor Chris Varty please Chair.
Thank you Helen.
This is for the Vice Chair of Children and Young People's Scrutiny Committee select one on your handset to vote for councillor James Coslett or two to vote for councillor Chris Varty three to abstain. Closing the vote.
Committee is as follows councillor Coslett seventy councillor Varty fifty-three there was no abstentions councillor Coslett is the Vice Chair of the Children's and Young People's Scrutiny Committee. Members nominations for the Chair of Safer and Stronger Communities Scrutiny Committee
Thank you Chair on behalf of the Joint Administration I should like to propose councillor Joyce Charlton as Chair of the Safer and Stronger Communities Scrutiny Committee thank you.
Second please.
Chair on behalf of the Joint Administration I'd like to formally second that proposal.
Any other nominations councillor Marshall call.
Can I formally propose councillor David Boyes please.
Second please second please.
Second councillor David Boyes please Chair.
Thank you Helen.
This is for the Chair of the Safer and Stronger Communities Scrutiny Committee select one on your handset for councillor Joyce Charlton number two for councillor David Boyes three to abstain. Votes open.
Committee is as follows councillor Charlton seventy councillor Boyes fifty-three there was no abstentions councillor Charlton is appointed the Chair of the Safer and Stronger Communities Scrutiny Group. Members nominations for the Vice Chair of the Safer and Stronger Communities Scrutiny Committee councillor.
Thank you Chair on behalf of the Joint Administration I should like to propose councillor Brian Avery as Vice Chair of the Safer and Stronger Communities Scrutiny Committee thank you.
Second please.
Thank you Chair on behalf of the Joint Administration I'd like to formally second the proposal.
Any other nominations councillor Marshall call.
Could I formally propose councillor Peter Atkinson please.
Second please.
Second councillor Peter Atkinson please Chair.
Thank you Helen.
This is for the Vice Chair of the Safer and Stronger Communities Scrutiny Committee select one on your handsets to vote for councillor Brian Avery or two to vote for councillor Peter Atkinson three to abstain. Votes open.
Members the result for the Vice Chair of the Safer and Stronger Communities Scrutiny Committee is as follows councillor Avery seventy councillor Atkinson fifty-three no abstentions councillor Avery is the Vice Chair of the Safer and Stronger Communities Scrutiny Committee. Members nominations please for the Chair of Environment and Sustainable Communities Scrutiny Committee councillor.
Thank you Chair on behalf of the Joint Administration I should like to propose councillor Bev Coolt as Chair of the Environment and Sustainable Communities Scrutiny Committee thank you.
Thank you Chair on behalf of the Joint Administration I'd like to formally second that proposal.
Thank you any other nominations for this position councillor Marshall call.
Thank you Chair I'd like to formally move councillor Eddie Adam.
Second please.
Second councillor Eddie Adam please Chair.
Thank you Helen.
This is for the Chair of Environment and Sustainable Communities Scrutiny Committee select one on your handsets if you're voting for councillor Bev Coolt or two if you're voting for councillor Eddie Adam three to abstain.
Members the result for the Chair of Environment and Sustainable Communities Scrutiny Committee is as follows councillor Coolt seventy councillor Adams fifty-three no abstentions councillor Coalt is appointed the Chair of the Environment and Sustainable Communities Scrutiny Committee. Members nominations please for the Vice Chair of the Environment and Sustainable Communities Scrutiny Committee councillor.
Thank you Chair on behalf of the Joint Administration I should like to propose councillor Jonathan Elmer as Vice Chair of the Environment and Sustainable Communities Scrutiny Committee thank you.
Thank you Chair on behalf of the Joint Administration I'd like to formally second the proposal.
Any other nominations councillor Marshall call.
Chair I'd like to formally propose councillor Samantha Townsend.
Second please.
Second councillor Samantha Townsend please Chair.
Thank you.
This is for the Vice Chair of the Environment and Sustainable Communities Scrutiny Committee select one on your handsets to vote for councillor Jonathan Elmer or two to vote for councillor Samantha Townsend three to abstain.
Members the result for the Vice Chair of the Environment and Sustainable Communities Scrutiny Group and Committee is as follows councillor Elmer sixty-nine councillor Townsend fifty-three no abstentions councillor Elmer is appointed the Vice Chair of the Environment and Sustainable Communities Scrutiny Committee. Members can have nominations for the Chair of Economy and Enterprise Scrutiny Committee councillor.
Thank you Chair on behalf of the Joint Administration I should like to propose councillor Bill Moist as Chair of the Economy and Enterprise Scrutiny Committee thank you.
Second please.
On behalf of the Joint Administration I'd like to formally second that proposal.
Thank you any other nominations for this councillor Marshall call.
Could I formally propose councillor Richard Manchester please.
Second please.
Second councillor Richard Manchester please Chair.
Thank you.
This is for the Chair of the Economy and Enterprise Scrutiny Committee select one on your handsets if you're voting for councillor Bill Moist or two for councillor Richard Manchester three to abstain. Richard Manchester, three to abstain. Closing the vote.
Members, the results for the Chair of Economy and Enterprise Scrutiny Committee is as follows: councillor Moist, sixty-nine; councillor Manchester, fifty-three. There was no abstentions. Councillor Moist is appointed Chair of the Economy and Enterprise Scrutiny Committee. Members can have nominations for the Vice Chair of the Economy and Enterprise Scrutiny Committee. Councillor.
Thank you, Chair. On behalf of the Joint Administration, I should like to propose councillor Andrew Jackson as Vice Chair of the Economy and Enterprise Scrutiny Committee. Thank you.
Seconda, please.
Thank you, Chair. On behalf of the Joint Administration, I'd like to formally second that proposal.
Any other nominations? Councillor Marshall, call.
Thanks, Chair. I'd like to formally move Kevin Early.
Seconda, please, Rob.
Second, councillor Kevin Early, please, Chair.
Thank you. Helen.
This is for the Vice Chair of the Economy and Enterprise Scrutiny Committee. Select one on your handsets to vote for councillor Andrew Jackson, or two to vote for councillor Kevin Early, three to abstain. Closing the vote.
Members, the results for the Vice Chair of the Economy and Enterprise Scrutiny Committee is as follows: councillor Jackson, sixty-nine; councillor Early, fifty-three. There was no abstentions, so councillor Jackson is appointed Vice Chair of the Economy and Enterprise Scrutiny Committee. Members can have nominations for the Chair of Adults and Wellbeing and Health Scrutiny Committee. Councillor.
Thank you, Chair. On behalf of the Joint Administration, I should like to formally propose councillor Patricia Jopling as Chair of the Adults, Wellbeing and Health Scrutiny Committee. Thank you.
Seconda, please.
Thank you, Chair. On behalf of the Joint Administration, I'd like to formally second the proposal.
Thank you. Any other nominations on this? Councillor Marshall, call.
Chair, I'd like to formally propose councillor Shirley Quinn.
Seconda, please.
Second, councillor Shirley Quinn, please, Chair.
Thank you. Helen.
For the Chair of Adults, Wellbeing and Health Scrutiny Committee, select one on your handset to vote for councillor Patricia Jopling, or two to vote for councillor Shirley Quinn. Votes open. Closing the vote.
Members, the results for the Chair of Adults and Wellbeing Health Scrutiny Committee is as follows: councillor Jopling, sixty-nine; councillor Quinn, fifty-three. There was no abstentions, so councillor Jopling is appointed Chair of Adults, Wellbeing and Health Scrutiny Committee. Members, can we have nominations for the Vice Chair of Adults, Wellbeing and Health Scrutiny Committee, please? Call.
Chair, could I formally move councillor Michelle Charlton-Lane, please?
Seconda, please.
Can I second councillor Michelle Charlton-Lane, please, Chair?
Thank you. Any more nominations? In that case, members, can we accept that nomination as done? Thank you. Michelle Charlton-Lane is the Vice Chair of... I can't believe this one. That concludes the appointments to be made under item twelve. Thank you. Can we now move to item thirteen? Oh, but it's lucky. The appointments to joint bodies and other bodies 2021 and 2022. Can I ask the head of Legal and Democratic Services to present this report, please?
Thank you, Chair. The purpose of this report is for council to agree the appointments to joint bodies and other bodies to which the council are invited to nominate representatives. I appreciate it has been a very long meeting for everybody, but please bear with me whilst I explain this, because there are a number of different recommendations and appointments to be made. So the details and criteria for nominating to the bodies are set out in paragraph four to the report. But in summary, in respect of the County Durham and Darlington Fire and Rescue Authority and the Police and Crime Panel, council is asked to agree the allocation of seats which have been calculated in accordance with the political balance rules. The appointment criteria in respect of the Charter Trust is set out as appendix four to the report. Members will note that appointees are drawn from members representing electoral areas wholly or partially within the former Durham city boundary. In addition, the county council as principal authority may appoint three additional trustees representing the wider area. Historically, this has included the Chair of the council, if they have not been a trustee by right, a cabinet member and an additional member appointed by the leader. With regard to the Joint Audit Committee, since 2013, the council has nominated a representative to serve on the Joint Audit Committee to assist the Police and Crime Commissioner and the Chief Constable. Historically, it has been the Chair of this county council's audit committee that's been nominated to this position. In respect of the North East Combined Authority, it's usual practice at this meeting for council to agree the appointments to the North East Combined Authority and the North of Tyne Joint Transport Committees. However, the NECA secretariat have not yet advised us of the specific requirements for the appointments. The report therefore seeks delegated authority from ourselves as head of Legal and Democratic Services to agree the appointments in consultation with the appropriate group leaders. The report also seeks delegated authority to agree the nominations to other bodies referred to at paragraph H of the report, which council is invited to nominate to. With regard to Believ Housing, which was formerly the County Durham Housing Group, the council is able to nominate one member to the Believ Housing Board. Nominees need to be drawn from one of the former areas of the Durham City Homes, Dale and Valley Homes and/or the East Durham Homes. Eligible members are set out in the appendix six to the report. And finally, in relation to the Business Durham Advisory Board, it is proposed that no appointments are made at this time to allow me as head of Legal and Democratic Services to consult with group leaders about the appointment criteria, and a further report will be presented to a future meeting of the council. Chair, the recommendations are at paragraph three A to I in the report.
Thank you, Helen. There are, members, there's a series of recommendations detailed in this report. Can I ask the leader of the council to move recommendations detailed in paragraphs three A, C, D, H and I of the report, and to note paragraphs three B and F? Leader.
Chair, I move the recommendations set out in paragraphs three A, C, D, H and I of the report. In respect to recommendation three C, the head of Legal and Democratic Services has outlined that the council may appoint three additional trustees as set out in paragraph four to appendix four. In moving this recommendation, I do not propose that the council appoints these additional trustee positions, and I also ask council to note paragraphs three B and F.
Can I have a seconda to the recommendations moved by the leader? Richard.
Councillor Richard Bell, second the recommendations as detailed by the leader. Thank you.
Can I ask the council if there are any questions at this point? Can I ask the council to agree the recommendations? Can I ask the leader of the council to continue, please?
Chair, I move recommendation three E, nominate councillor Alex Watson as Chair of the county council's audit committee. Thank you.
Can I have a seconda to the recommendation moved by the leader?
Second the recommendation for councillor Watson.
Can I ask the council to agree the recommendation moved by the leader? Can I ask the leader of the council to continue, please?
Thank you, Chair. And finally, I move recommendation three G, nominate councillor Sam Zare to serve on the Believ Housing Board.
Can I have a seconda to the recommendation moved by the leader, please?
Second the recommendation for councillor Zare to be on Believ Board.
Thank you. Can I now move to item fourteen? Sorry. Does the council agree the report? Sorry about that. Thank you. Now we'll move on to item fourteen. Dates of the council meetings. Can I ask the council to agree the suggested dates of the council meetings for 2021 and 2022 as printed on the agenda? Agreed? You'll be pleased to know that concludes today's business. Today's meeting has been extremely difficult to coordinate, and I would like to thank you all for your patience and understanding. I would like if you could please remain seated until you are called by a member of staff from committee services. The hall will be emptied one row at a time. You will then be asked to exit the hall in a safe and considerate way. It would be helpful if you could please leave your handsets and unique registration cards on your table. These will be collected back and once everyone has vacated the hall. Thank you for your attendance, members.